...work session and special meeting, if I could ask somebody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I get a motion to accept tonight's agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. And now I'll turn the dais over to Dr. Harrison for some, for some good events.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see such an audience here. As much as we'd like to think you came to see us, we're thrilled to have the opportunity to honor two wonderful groups of students tonight. And first, we're going to begin with our Main Street School Spelling Bee winner. And before we acknowledge the winners and invite them up to meet the board and be congratulated, I'd like to ask Ms. Casey to stand, our interim principal at Main Street School, just to say a few words about the overall spelling bee competition and the work our students did throughout the process.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. I'm happy to do that. Good evening, everyone. This was the sixth annual Main Street Spelling Bee. It was held on December 12th. And the students at Main Street School worked very hard studying for the spelling bee. We had eighty fourth graders participate and eighty eight fifth graders. So there was a pre-bee where all of those students participated in. From that group, we narrowed it down to eighteen finalists for fourth grade and twenty-one finalists for fifth grade. So it was a great deal of competition and lots of hard work studying a list of about five hundred words. And so the students who are here this evening were the winners, the winners and the runners-up of that contest. I would like to say that this is a joint effort between Main Street School and the PTSA. The PTSA provided the trophy and also T-shirts and water bottles for the students and the medals and ribbons for the runners-up. So we're very grateful to that partnership of the PTSA who works with us in so many different events, this being one of them. One of the things I would like to say is I was very proud of all the students who participated and who worked very hard and in terms of their knowledge of spelling, but equally as proud of the way that they supported each other. And I think that you, people who were at the spelling bee can certainly attest to the fact that they were cheering each other on and really being supportive of each other throughout the process. And we have a very strong character ed program at Main Street School, and that really reflected the, all the things that they have learned through that. So we're very, very proud of them. Congratulations.
So it's time to acknowledge our students that succeeded and really served themselves well and certainly represented the school very well. And we'll begin by recognizing our fourth grade finalists. And first is our runner-up, Nicholas Papacano. Nicholas? Well, Nicholas is not here, but we certainly extend our congratulations, and we'll make sure we can get him his certificate. Our fourth grade winner was Alexandra Oster. Congratulations. We're very proud of you.
Great job, great job.
One of our fifth grade runners-up, Aiden Meany. Aiden? Well, Ms. Casey, you're going to have some homework to make sure these fine students get their certificates. Our next fifth grade runner-up is Ruchi Perak. Ruchi? And our fifth grade winner is Max Edelman. Congratulations.
Uh-huh? Max Edelman? No. Good job, Max.
So each of our winners that we've acknowledged tonight, we certainly are proud of you. It's courageous to get up there, as you did. We also want to acknowledge the work of all of our students that were there. That level of participation, in this case you spoke of, is very, very impressive. Our winners, when you get home tonight, I think your parents turn the spell check function off on your computers because you don't need it anymore. But congratulations, we're very, very proud of you.
Absolutely.
So we also have another wonderful group of students, student athletes, to recognize this evening, something that we're very, very proud of. We learned in the last two weeks that our girls soccer team had the highest GPA in the state, average GPA of ninety-eight point eight three, which is quite.
Beat you and I, Phil.
With achievement like that on and off the field, you certainly deserve a lot of recognition, and you represent the entire school community, the high school, and our athletics program very, very well. Tonight, we'd like to welcome Mr. Rich Silverstein. And Rich? Rich is here from the New York State Scholar-Athlete Public High School Athletic Association, and he's going to present the New York State Scholar-Athlete Award on behalf of the association. He is the Assistant Executive Director of the Southern Westchester BOSI's Interscholastic Athletics. So with that tongue twist there, my goodness, all the times we only have a few people here, and tonight's the night I stumble, right? But with that said, Rich, I want to turn it over to you so we can acknowledge the great work of these young ladies and their coaches.
Well, thank you very much for having us here this evening. Again, my name is Rich Silverstein, and I'm representing Section One and the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. To be recognized as a New York State Public High School Athletic Association Scholar-Athlete is an outstanding achievement, but to be recognized as a state champion is a feat that is beyond incredible. New York State recognizes varsity teams that have accomplished a minimum team grade point average of ninety percent. Here at Irvington High School, your girls varsity soccer team of sixteen members has placed first out of four hundred and sixty-seven teams in the state of New York with a combined grade point average of ninety-eight point eight three-three percent. Irvington High School's girls soccer team has the highest average earned in the twenty-two year history of the program. This award is Irvington High School's twenty-sixth state Scholar-Athlete Team Award earned. Of those twenty-six, this is the first for your girls soccer team program. On behalf of Section One, the New York State Public, congratulations on this extremely well-deserved award.
Do you have some words I'd like to give out?
So do you want Coach Flynn, Mr. McCormick, or Athletic Kirk, do you want to step forward, say anything? We haven't seen you around in a while, have you been?
I'll start with this side. Tiffany Flynn, girls varsity soccer coach, back after having a baby just about a month ago. So congratulations to Tiffany. Great season, but also a wonderful experience this past month. So congratulations, Karen. I know I pulled up all the girls who are here tonight, a very impressive turnout on a cold midterm exam week, so we have a lot of girls here tonight that's impressive. But I also want to add that every one of our varsity soccer, varsity fall teams this year was recognized as a New York State Scholar-Athlete Award winner. They all had a nine-year above average, and obviously the girls soccer team was the highest so far. So all of our student athletes had a great fall under some trying, you know, circumstances with all our fields and moving and shuffling around with games, but it's a testament to their hard work, a testament to their dedication, and the coaches who are incredibly flexible with allowing kids to get work done, practices early, late, and all over. It really is a testament to their dedication and hard work, so congratulations.
Okay, let's start with calling up Haley Hall. Lisa Pomeranz. Julia Rose. Danielle Gorgano. Michelle Hartog. C.C. Shuffley. Alexandra Melton. Emma Bernstein. Maddie Garoos. Phalene Hall. Jenny Molina. Chelsea Mulatt. Amanda Dred. Catherine Hoynes. Haley Plout. I'm not sure if they came in tonight, Patty Zias. Jess Neller. And Genevieve Hurwitz. Okay, at this time, I think which other band came up? Who presented the band which we displayed to campus today?
Yeah. League of Band.
Okay, ladies, on behalf of the New York State Public, I would like to say once again congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Do you think so?
Absolutely. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Hi, how are you?
Well, I wish we could, yeah, well, keep them here or start every meeting that way.
Well, I think we do have good news to share on that front. Thank you to our Main Street School students as well.
Thank you, guys. Congrats. See you.
In the coming months, we will be acknowledging more students, our winners of our geography piece. We also have some other sports teams that have done very well in individual accomplishments that we'll be recognizing along the way. So we're glad to recognize the accomplishments of our students. And certainly, the one piece that came out of the presentation tonight was that certainly not only were we proud of our girls' work with a ninety-eight point eight three, but it was, that was the first that I heard, that it was the highest-earned GPA in the twenty-two year history of the award being granted. So certainly.
First out of four hundred and sixty-seven teams?
I don't have a specific stat here, but I think it was four sixty-two.
Yep.
Yeah, four sixty-seven, yeah. So quite an accomplishment.
That's amazing.
Very good.
That's right.
So certainly proud of them. A couple other points that I do just want to bring up this evening, just to give everyone a heads up, we're starting to work in earnest on developing the calendar for next year. The state just came out with the region schedule, so with that before us, we're able to start to make some informed decisions. We're going to certainly look to collaborate with BOSI's and surrounding school districts to try to align our calendars the best we can, to coordinate student services effectively, and also to try to take advantage of as many opportunities for shared services as we can. Also, due to how the calendar falls and the different sequences of holidays, there's going to be some pretty interesting conversations to have because there's that possibility of a later start to the school year because of how the calendar works out. And there's definitely a lot of conversation about the possibility of having a two-week winter holiday recess in December. So we're working out some of the details, not only trying to align our efforts well, as I said, with our neighboring districts, but to put forward a recommendation to the Board of Education that will reflect what we think is best for our students. So more to come on that, but I wanted to let you know that we are working on that now that we have the information that we need from the state. Also, just an update on the principal search. I want to commend Dr. Core for all her hard work. We facilitated five forums in an effort to solicit information from our community, whether that was staff, students, or parents or the community at large. We do have a final forum scheduled for high school students for Friday, February 1st during student lunch period, so any folks in the listening audience who happen to have students in the high school, please encourage them to come find Dr. Core during lunch periods next Friday. We definitely want to get all the feedback that we possibly can. As we're pulling the information that we've collected thus far, we will assess the quantity of feedback that we received before, the story that information tells us, which of course will inform the next steps in our process, which will be to certainly begin to craft the questions that we're going to ask our candidates and finalize that profile, which would outline the type of individual we want to lead our school. We may also look to open up another opportunity for some public input, so we will be communicating that in the very near future. And once we take that final step and launch the interviewing process, we're going to begin to look at a similar process once again for Main Street School. So we'll look to see a lot of people out of those forums and have important dialogue on that topic. Finally, maybe not finally, but I do want to acknowledge that we held a coffee and conversation with yours truly, and I think it was well-attended, approximately twenty parents, our second one this month. We focused on a lot of conversation on important issues and topics facing the school district, instructional topics, APPR, Common Core, facilities needs, field projects, and district budget. Special thanks to everyone in the PTSA for providing that opportunity, and we'll be promoting the next one, which is just a bit down the road. So we look forward to seeing folks there. We also want to acknowledge that last week, and thank the Diversity Foundation for sponsoring the screening of Bully, which has certainly opened some important dialogue on the topic in our school community. Not only that, we had the first opportunity publicly to see a screening of the student-made video, It Gets Better, which is quite impressive. We had approximately two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and fifty people in attendance. Certainly want to acknowledge Mr. Palermo, Dr. Mosenthal, who participated in the panel at the end, which engaged some of our educators. We had a social worker as well as a psychologist that fielded a number of questions that were presented by the audience on the topic of bullying and bullying in schools and how we respond. So it was certainly a fruitful evening, humbling movie, and certainly hearts kind of went out. And I do want to say that while context tells quite a story, I think we wrapped up with some wonderful public commentary that while there were some terrible pictures being painted in the situation system children unfortunately had to live through, that in our schools, I think we do take a very proactive approach, we're always looking to better our practices, and I think that was recognized through some commentary from one of the participants that evening. But it certainly is, was an eye-opening film, and it's something that's going to be released soon on Netflix, so if you didn't have the opportunity to attend the other night, keep your eyes open and take advantage of the convenience that you can have in renting it through a service such as that. But with that said, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. I do want to reserve a little bit of time for anybody in the community that has specific questions on the budget presentation because of having, I know we have it here, but people ask questions now before the presentations, sort of cart before the horse, but if anybody has in the community any comments or statements on anything on the agenda, if they could please do so now. Hearing none? Before we move to approve the consent agenda, does anybody on the board want to raise anything on the consent agenda? Any questions? None? Okay, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second? Got it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. The next thing we'll do is move to the committee liaison reports. Communications. Just a wait.
Yes, the communications committee met first weekend here in New York? Yeah, I think so. And we spent the bulk of our discussion talking about the communications that we would employ during the budget process to ensure that people understand what's going on in the budget process this year. And once again, we spoke about the importance of doing forums and arranging those forums in a more frequent manner so that we do more than we did two years ago. I don't recall whether we did any last year at all, but certainly more than we've done in the past. And we wanted to have them at different times as well, some in the evening and some in the morning so that, so different types of people could come. And we also discussed the importance of reaching out to seniors in our community so that they would understand what's going on with our budget. We did not have any specific suggestions for that, if I recall correctly.
We talked about it a little bit in the past, but we can't still talk about how we're going to be looking forward.
Right. So it was pretty much our communications meeting, most of it was focused talking about the budget implications.
Yeah, I think communications just in general, which expanded that this year has really been a very positive thing for the district. And I saw, I don't know whose idea it was, but I thought it was great that through the village, Mayor Smith's last, we were able to publicize the principal search meeting as well. I mean, could we do more of that cross-pollinization to make sure we're hitting as many people as possible? I just think there may be a sub, it just seemed like a great idea to do that, and maybe we could help the district, you know, help the village as well in our Facebook page and things like that. Safety Committee. Mrs. Casher.
We met last week on the day of the two-hour snow delay, so I was a little late getting into the meeting because I had dumped my son somewhere before Main Street started. We discussed lockdown drills at all of the schools that will be holding them monthly, even though the state requirement is only two for the calendar year. Dr. Harrison and Gary had visited a school that was a California campus and how they enclosed it. He talked about how, you know, they're going to be talking about some options we might be looking into. They met with a security firm, and he's going to be interviewing another one this week, I think he said, about having a security firm come to the school and make some recommendations for all of our schools. And of course, he gave a little slide plans my way because he said they'll be putting it forward to the board for money, you know, to approve, which I think we're all in support of, but I don't want to speak on behalf of my fellow board members. There was discussion about the doors locking in the classrooms because they lock with the key, and if you don't have the key, how can you keep them locked? Some general comments were made, I don't want to really go specific. It was, Main Street already had their lockdown, and based on their meetings that they had afterwards, they determined that they're going to keep the doors. The doors only lock from the outside, so they're going to permanently keep them locked so at any given time, they could always lock down the doors if there was a true emergency. And the walkie-talkies about expanding those because they have limited range, specifically the desk here at the high school, middle school campus, you know, for someone to communicate should there be an issue at the front entrance. I'm not really sure how much I really should know to be specific.
I think, no, I think the spirit of the conversation was that we reviewed the specific lockdown drills that have been facilitated at that point. We identified some strategies we need to take as far as keys and addressing some other communication tools that, all of which were enacting the recommendations from the observers, which included our local police department to ensure that we're as effective as possible in those critical times.
Great, thank you very much. I guess at this point, I'd like to turn over to Dr. Harrison and Ms. Miller for the budget discussion on athletics, special education, and PPS.
Very good. Well, thank you once again. We advertised early on, this is a part of our process of helping the board understand what our current constraints are in assembling our budgets, which will lead to, we know ultimately, a budgetary recommendation a little over a month down the road. And in doing so, we outlined a number of challenges that we face with costs that are growing beyond our control, looking at transportation issues, special education concerns, but primarily looking at the challenges that we face with other areas such as pension and the cost factors that we have to manage, all within the context of our cap. So in doing so, we're going through a process where we're breaking down the budget and almost going line by line, understanding the challenges that we have there, understanding the expenses. Through this process, we're outlining things that we can see as needs, some areas we're identifying reductions that we've made along the way, but in the end acknowledging that we're going to have to put things into different pots, right? We're going to look at the things that we can touch. We're going to look at the things that we see as absolute necessities, some additions that may be required per some enrollment growths or as related to facility needs or special education needs, but then we're going to start to look at those things where we have a little more control. And I hate using the word discretionary funds, but because there's so few of them that we have available to us, but starting to look at prioritizing those areas that are the things that we believe we need to best deliver our programs and support our students' needs. So so far in the process, we provided an overview. That overview, the first shot, we kind of looked at those constraints, those factors that were beyond our control. And at a first pass, we were facing challenges where we were seeing costs or expenditures that we predicted would exceed one point seven million dollars beyond cap. And now we're beginning to go through the process. We've looked at the business operational end of things, and now we're starting to move a little closer to students. Tonight, Ms. Miller is going to, along with our colleagues, Mr. McCormick, Dr. Mosenthal's going to jump in at one little point, and Mr. Palermo, we're going to focus on athletics, special education, and pupil personnel services. And if where possible, let's see if we can try to either hold questions to the end or get them at some, at some transitions within the presentation so we can be as efficient as possible. So that said, everybody?
Could I just stop one second before we get into the budget making, turn to Ms. Casey? And I just want to jump back to the safety committee meeting, hold the thought and hold some, could you maybe address in the bottom here the accident reports on why Main Street has twice as many accidents as any other school? Not tonight, but maybe send an email to Chris, he could send it to us?
That would be me.
Yeah, definitely have all that data.
I have that.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, you ready for party?
Sure. Okay. Is this on? Okay. Good evening. It was nice to start off with our scholar athletes, and as I get into the presentation a bit later on, I'll be recognizing some other achievements as well. But the first slide up here tonight is basically the nuts and bolts of the athletic budget. Pretty much every budget line listed there, with the exception of transportation, which Ms. Miller does separately for all transportation, encompasses the whole athletic budget. And you can see... that may be required per some enrollment growths or as related to facility needs or special education needs, but then we're going to start to look at those things where we have a little more control. And I hate using the word discretionary funds, but we, because there's so few of them that we have available to us, but starting to look in prioritizing those areas that are the things that we believe we need to best deliver our programs and support our students' needs. So so far in the process, we provided an overview. That overview, the first shot, we kind of looked at those constraints, those factors that were beyond our control. And then at first pass, we were facing challenges where we were seeing costs or expenditures that we predicted would exceed $1.7 billion beyond cap. And now we're beginning to go through the process. We've looked at the business operational end of things and now we're starting to move a little closer to students. Tonight, Ms. Miller is going to, along with our colleagues, Mr. McCormick, Dr. Rosenthal is going to jump in at one little point, and Mr. Palermo, we're going to focus on athletics, special education, and pupil personnel services. And if where possible, let's see if we can try to either hold questions to the end or get them at some, at some transitions within the presentation so we can be as efficient as possible. So that said, Beverly?
Could I just stop one second before getting into the budget meeting, turn to Miss Casey? And I just want to jump back to the safety committee meeting, hold the thought and hold some, could you maybe address in the bottom here the accident reports on why Main Street has twice as many accidents as any other school? Not tonight, but maybe send an email to Chris and he could send it to us?
That would be me.
Yeah, definitely have all that data.
I have that.
Okay, great. Thanks.
All right, you ready for party? Okay.
This one? Okay. Good evening. It was nice to start off with our scholar athletes and as I get into the presentation a bit later on, I'll be recognizing some other achievements as well. But the first slide up here tonight is basically the nuts and bolts of the athletic budget. Pretty much every budget line listed there, with the exception of transportation, which Ms. Miller does separately for all transportation, encompasses the whole athletic budget. And you can see all the way to the right-hand column, if you look all the way over to the right, the increases that are noted, the parentheses are the, obviously, the, the accounts that are going down. So the first was, is basically the coaching salaries that you saw there and the increase of $16,000 is basically attributed to a couple of additions, partial reinstatement on a JV boys' lacrosse coach and the reinstatement of JV field hockey. It also deals with the fact that our contract was settled and there are now increases to the salary steps for our coaches. So each of those sports up there has coaches associated with it and the increases that were noted in the first page are associated with that. The next is our equipment line, which is reinstated last year. We were, we were purchasing this type of equipment out of our supplies line and Ms. Miller said we should really put it back into the equipment line. These are big-ticket items that are necessary for our programs. You see there a volleyball system for the campus gym, which will help incorporate two practice courts, as well as a new set of field hockey goals with nets. We do a lot of moving around in the nets, so this is necessary to just update our goals, which have been about four or five years old. The next is our other expenditures. In this line, you have everything from ice hockey rental fees, bowling rental fees, they're all listed there. In this line, you basically see the biggest addition, which would be the need, the hope for, a full-time athletic trainer services. We have been getting by the last few years with part-time athletic trainer services with about $10,000 budget for that, but with all the concussions guidelines from New York State and the necessity, I believe, for pre and post-assessment, plus, you know, as, as we continue to see, the state actually mandates that we have a number of testing for those athletes and the athletic trainer would be, would be certified in assessing the pre-assessment, assessing the pre-concussion tests as well as being on the field and here at school each day for any injuries that may occur. So that $40,000 is a new item, that's about a $30,000 increase. Also, you see here, entrance fees to tournaments, a number of our teams go to weekend tournaments. Wrestling is probably the one in particular, along with cross-country and track and field, that participates in those type of tournaments. The mileage fees, that number there is pretty high the last few years based on the fact that our basketball team has been traveling up to the States, which has an expenditure, and we have staff that accompany a number of athletes up to their state competitions, which is in there as well. You see police coverage, which is along the lines for homecoming and a number of the football games as well. Equipment repair, this is where we have all of our football equipment recertified, as well as sending out uniforms for repair, as well as sanitizing and storage. Each of the teams basically has their uniforms collected, sent out, and then sent back and they will assess whether the uniforms damaged, can be repaired. A lot of the certification for helmets, shoulder pads are recertified by the companies and that's a big part of it. The hard recertification helmets, in particular in the football, as well as baseball and softball, is a big part of that equipment repair budget. In our supplies line, again, nuts and bolts, basically things that we need to run each of the programs, but the biggest ticket items that fall into the supplies line are the uniforms. Uniforms are usually rotated on a three- to four-year cycle. If we are lucky, we can push up to four years and then we pass those uniforms down to the JV or modified levels. So the cycle is trying to encompass as many teams as possible, sticking to that cycle as best we can. We try to get each team in there and, you know, if possible, pass them down. If not, a little lesser quality uniform may be purchased for maybe a modified level, where we have some lower levels who get it maybe every other year, every two years. And there are some teams who do purchase their own T-shirts and keep them and wear them and then maybe not have to buy them the following year, mainly on the modified level, modified tennis, where the kids want to purchase their own things. The last one is the BOSI's line. This, it doesn't list it here, but it's an $80,000 budget line. This really is the assignment of all the officials that cover our games, the administrative staff costs at BOSI's, to help assign those officials, make any game changes that are necessary due to cancellations, due to weather, conflicts, field conflicts, as well as any section one awards that we are receiving. So the biggest bulk of that is coming from our officials' costs to cover all of our contests. I just thought it'd be noteworthy to put up there, in the last year and a half, we have had some terrific achievements. Our girls' basketball team, as well noted, federation champions, state champions, also sectional champions, the last, well, the last three years for the States, two out of three for Federation, and the last three for sectionals. We have had 10 league champions just last year, as well as part of this year. Our latest one, this past weekend, we had a county champion in girls' winter track and they also won the league championship this past winter. As you noted here, we had a scholar athlete champion this year and we had one last year and we had 24 New York State scholar athlete teams. That's all of our teams within nine year above average. On the individual level, two Con Ed award winners, a very prestigious award last year. We had two winners, we actually had one who won a scholarship at the Con Ed Awards banquet. We also had two sectional champions, a wrestler and indoor track high jumper. Two county champions as well in track and field. 27 of our varsity athletes received at least all section or I don't mention all section awards and we had five individual state qualifiers. That would be cross-country and swimming, as well as track and field. At last, you know, some nice crap. The, the PT, Irving to PTSA has been tremendously generous to the Irving Athletic Program. The new scoreboard that you see out of Zara's Field, a new wrestling mat, as well as trophy cases that are located both in the hall outside and in the atrium. PTSA has come to me and said, if there's anything you need, please don't hesitate to ask and we will continue to use them as a resource to offset some of the, some of the costs that we have for the athletic program. And then last, to the board of ed, we had two reinstatement assistant coaching positions that have been cut years ago due to budget. Varsity track, sorry, varsity cross-country assistant coach, as well as varsity wrestling. Both those sports have had tremendous number increases in participants and because of those assistant coaches, I believe we are able to have better practices, the coaches are able to do more with our athletes, we're seeing better turnout at practices, as well as safety. There's times where we were going to wrestling tournaments where Max would be held in two gyms and our coach was constantly running back and forth between two gyms. The assistant coach has been able to really work with the kids and help as far as coverage to those needs. So we continue to ask for support in the assistant coach position and it's been very beneficial this past year.
Nice question. Is that, is the, is the 16 eight, is that, does that include the assistant positions?
So those assistant positions for wrestling and cross-country are already in this year's budget. So we already have those. That would go back to the partial reinstatement for lacrosse, as well as the field hockey, which would go back in that year.
On the, your athletic trainer, put in a new full-time person, two questions. What, do you know what's currently funded for the part-time person that we have?
It's, it's not an employee of ours, it's an outside contract.
How much?
So right now we're paying about ten.
Huh? And then the other, I guess the other question is, I know that you can give us a teaching position, but because of the nature of the job, definitely you might be able to fund through donations from outside organizations, as opposed to paying directly from the operating group?
Well, it, it could be a donation to the athletic department.
Yes.
To athletic, but this is an outside program that is doing, not an individual that we employ.
Well, I know that, but I guess, I, I guess the discussion has come up in the past about, you know, teaching positions can't be funded by donations from the PTSA. Can a trainer position be funded by donations from athletic organizations?
Yeah, I don't see why, I don't know. It would be just like they, you know.
Sorry. Can I ask a question or just? I'm an occupational therapist and like you would actually get salaries similarly because you'd have to give that for some benefits. A certified athletic trainer typically gets a full benefits package, so I don't know if that would be something that could just get outside money or if that would fall to the running.
Unless we kind of, I don't know, in a competitive contest, they're just up the hours and then of course you set it up differently.
They're not, right now, they're, they're not our people.
Sorry.
They are from Mercy.
Services, right.
They're from Mercy College, they're not our employees.
Right, but I'm saying you have a full-time.
Well, it still wouldn't be full-time, it would be contracted.
Okay, it'd be contracted, it would be, you'd be just adding to the staff, you'd just be contracting for more hours essentially.
Right, then that's different.
Yes.
Okay, so why, why don't we look into that to see, is that maybe one option, is I think $30,000 raises in that line?
In line 160 non-instructional salaries, we budgeted 126, we're going to spend 108.
Yes.
So what was that differential?
The difference is because we got a retirement and a clerical and the new hire was less and the new hire also did not take health insurance waiver. If you remember my last presentation, health insurance waivers have to be before income and that's both.
So why do we pump it up next year?
It's going up to 125 because the individuals in that coach would get salary increases.
Oh, these are salary raises for that entire line?
Right, because coaches, some of the, most of our coaches are instructional, we have some that are not instructional, so it's a different bargaining, they're teaching, they're a different pension, so they have to be done for separate places.
Are, we pay our coaches a pension?
Yeah, I, I think, I think what you mean is some of our coaches are teachers. So those teachers are part of the bargaining unit. Other coaches are not teachers for the IUD and these coaches are non and some of them that.
So it's because they were teachers?
Right, right, yeah, not because they're coaches, right. Yes, great.
Yeah, so this year you have two field hockey teams, next year you're going back to three.
That would be the hope that we would have for.
Do you believe they're the top?
There's enough numbers.
That's the hope right now, it was a, a modified.
It was kind of like modified and varsity, there was no JV.
Yeah, I'm kind of, oh, that's why you're putting JV, because you still have.
Right, and we believe a lot of kids can go out for the varsity because there would have been the 18th, the 24th kid on the varsity, right, and then be, you know, six kids on JV, we think with the number coming up for modified, plus those kids would still be either, you know, head graders playing JV, we might have enough in field JV.
How many teams do we have? 68, 32, that's a number, 60s?
Yeah, 68, okay.
Of those 68 teams, how many fundraised for their team?
Fundraisers for their own personal gear?
Yeah, to help the school.
Most of the, most of the teams basically fundraised to get their own gear, extra items, jackets, bags, things that they supplement their, there's not much fundraising to offset budgetary expenses.
But how many of the 68 teams do fundraising?
A lot of them do it for themselves. I, I can't think of any that do it to offset budgetary expenses.
I don't think I've got any questions.
He just means general.
In general?
In general, do all 68?
No, I would not say every, you know, varsity level, I would say 50 to 60% fundraising strides.
Okay, so is it possible, maybe next time, next meeting, you could give us, me, a list of how many teams don't fundraise? Sure. That would be helpful because if we're looking at a billion seven, everybody has to help out. And if we're going to create 68 different teams that enables everyone to have academic, you know, participation, et cetera, et cetera, I think it's, it's time now to ask everyone to participate. Thanks.
Two more questions. On the same question Maria asked for the hockey for the boys, there was no JV, you were like a modified and varsity?
Well, last year we actually had a modified A and a modified B because we had so many participants in the modified level, but nobody wanted to play at the 9, 10 level. We had two teams in the modified level, so it'd be an increase to get the JV level back because we now have a ton of modified kids moving up to the high school level. So it'd be an increase in salary to cover the JV costs and then just one modified. So it's still three coaches, but it's an increase in cost at a level.
And then my second question, probably more profound, but on the schedule of the detail of other expenses, is there any way we could get that with the, kind of the, what was the budget and what was the estimated expense, kind of what you did for the main ones?
For the other expenses?
It's hard to look at the detail in a vacuum, yeah. Is there a way on the main one, the real budget, estimate expense, proposed budget?
Right, that we.
Just for the other expenses?
Other expenses, I create, except for the 70.
Yeah, yeah.
1,400, yeah. Thanks.
And I have one more question about the athletic trainers. So basically, you're asking for additional funds to add more time.
More hours.
More hours.
Okay. Everybody else, you look good. Want to go to the next one? And I'll, I'll have community comment, if any, after. No, no problem. Don't worry.
So now, I think we're, so Mr. Palermo.
I have a question for, about those athletic budgets?
We're going to take all the public comments and questions at the end, yeah.
Good evening.
It's on.
Okay. Tonight, we're talking about the special education budget and then the pupil personnel services budget. There's the big picture in our special education budget. You'll see that we have, we're requesting an additional, two special education teachers on the top line and an additional clerical person on the second line and we'll go into those in more detail in slides to come. So the need for the additional clerical position, we have had two full-time clerical positions in our office since I've been in the district for six years. We actually used to have that supplemented by retired teachers that volunteered in the office as well. That ended probably five years ago, so we've actually had somewhat of a reduction of the support in the office. In that same time period, the John Cardinal O'Connor School opened, which essentially added 25% more students with disabilities to our caseload. There's been a significant increase in Medicaid billing, the federal government sued New York State and as part of the settlement agreement, great amounts of paperwork and monitoring were, as a result. And so we've been having to deal with that. For instance, our providers used to provide quarterly notes on their therapy services. Now they have to provide daily notes and we have to check every single employee in the district against a list, monthly, actually three different lists, to make sure that they're not on government no-no lists. So there are those kinds of reporting requirements that have increased significantly in the last couple of years. We've had increased numbers of CSEs and CPSD meetings, both as a result of a rising number of students with disabilities moving into the district and having to shift some things around within programming. We've had increased state reporting requirements, the whole data, you may not realize that although we have Jesse and his department doing a lot of the data reporting for our district, the folks in my office are very much keyed into that work and provide all the special education data that gets reported to the state and that's been increasing as the rest of the data warehouse reporting has been increasing. Stack reporting, stack reports are the mechanism by which we procure state aid for special education. When students cross a level of funding that we call the high-cost threshold, we get funding back from the state for those high-cost placements. Fortunately, not the total amount of those high-cost placements, but a percentage, and so there's that reporting involved. Homebound instruction has been increasing over time and so we've been working with the increase, setting up, communicating with the tutoring organization, the billing, et cetera with that. We have increased number of contracted services, not so much that we have increased contracted services, but we have increased numbers of contracts. For instance, we used to place students in out-of-district placements in private schools and things and we just placed them there. Now we're required to have contracts in place with those places, so we have to, my office handles the contracts and getting those set up and signed and everything. DSA responsibilities, that's the Dignity With All Students Act, that's new this year. So I am, as the district DSA coordinator, even though the principals at each building are DSA coordinators, at the building level, I have district-level oversight and that includes some coordination responsibilities, which obviously needs clerical support. Nurse self-procurement, we've had a great difficulty getting nurse subs and so many times, our new subservice doesn't work when you don't have subs in the system for them to call. We've done, spent a lot of time interviewing, but we also sometimes have to go to an agency in order to get nurses and that requires additional contact time from our clerical folks. Response to intervention, RTIM Direct is a new software system that is, we've been putting into place, it works similarly to IEP Direct, except it tracks all of the academic intervention services and our efforts to prevent students from needing special education services through providing those services through district-level services. And then finally, I am the homeless liaison or the McKinney-Bento, is the name of the law, the McKinney-Bento Act, and there's reporting associated with that, which goes back up to that stack recording, there's a different set of stacks that need to be submitted for students who are designated as needing homeless services. All of that has added up over the past few years, and we really need to have our third clerical person in the office in order to support all of those efforts, some of which bring in significant funds to the district, and so it's important.
Scott, what's the anticipated compensation for that position?
Um, clerical position, um, I would say probably forty-five, forty-five, seventy-five.
Forty-five. And would it be possible to sort of, um, go halfway and hire a part-timer, which would obviously not solve your entire problem, but solve part of your problem? Let me put it different, I know it's not desirable to have part-time, but, um, is this the type of work that in theory could be done by part-timer, understanding that that person wouldn't get everything done?
Right, I mean, obviously.
What's a special skill that would require us to?
No, it's, it's very difficult to find a part-time.
Correct.
Clerical.
That's kind of my question.
Right. So, obviously, part-time help would be better than no help, but, um, but the best point is well taken, is the, the pool for part-time positions is not always as full as people.
Is there, I, I remember I was asking a question a while back about, um, being able to recoup some of the costs for these kinds of clerical functions from the non-cardinal. Where does that stand, especially basically in a position?
Uh, we are not able to recoup that unless the, it's, the only time that we could recoup from a clerical position is if they were actually sitting in a CSE meeting, recording the notes of the meeting at the meeting, which we could do. We can't currently do it with the help that we have, we could consider taking a look at that if we were able to do that, but, uh, but just the general office functioning, uh, clerical support for the overall program, we're not, we're not able to recover.
So we're not allowed to backbuild the s- the school?
Correct, you can only backbuild the schools for direct services, so we can build for all the services that are being provided to the students, and we're allowed to build for the time that's actually, for the people sitting in a CSE meeting. But there's a tremendous amount of work that, uh, goes on behind the scenes to put that I E S P together for those students and to maintain the whole program, and that is not tillable back.
Did we ever run that by our attorneys to see if they've explored that?
Yeah, we've explored it pretty thoroughly.
And they said something.
Right.
So forty-five of the ninety-nine is due to that position, right?
Correct.
The rest is contract.
Correct. Hey, the need for an additional high school special education teacher, to be completely honest with you, I think we've been somewhat understaffed at the high school for quite a long time, but the teachers work very hard and kids have been graduating, so it's been hard to say we needed another high school teacher. We actually have fewer teachers at the high school than we have at the middle school, and we have an additional grade level at the high school. So, this, in the last two years, we've had a number of students come to the high school level who have lower skill levels and required a more specialized, um, departmentalized special classes, which has stretched those resources thinly. And so, we've had to cover those departmentalized special classes as well as the integrated co-taught classes and the resource rooms and the academic support classes that we have traditionally offered. We've had those special classes, we have not generally had to have them in all four grades, which is the current situation. This year, we have, all of my special education teachers are teaching an extra period each day through a stipend that's allowed in the contract. And we have one social studies teacher who teaches traditionally one or two special classes, special education classes a year, this year he's teaching three. Um, and he's starting to feel more like a special education teacher than a social studies teacher, so we, uh, we, actually, the union had said, you know, essentially that's a full-time position when you add all those individual periods up. We agreed to get through this year based in the way we are, sort of band-aiding it, but that we would really need to look at a full-time position to address those needs. As I'm noting there, a third of our students with IEPs are at the high school, uh, so the, the numbers are large, uh, and half of the students with five oh four plans are at the high school.
What, Yelena just asked for, it, it sort of just goes into special education in general. What is our rate of kids who go in and have an IEP or a five oh four plan, that eventually it gets worked out and the kids are, I'm gonna use the, the wrong word, but basically mainstream?
Right, okay.
On, on, once again, what is our rate on that?
Very few are totally declassified, we certainly have students where in the, in the process of high school in particular, we try to back off on those services because, um, when we go off to college or do a job or whatever, there aren't people following you around making sure you do everything as much, so we try to prepare kids for life by backing off on the services. And by the time they're seniors, generally, we've, we've pared those down significantly.
Okay. What do the alliances reduces the need for, uh, have district placements, if we hired this person, do you see that we're going to be able to bring any of the out-of placement district students back to our school?
Probably not, the reason I'm saying that it reduces what some of those kids with the lower needs that I spoke about, that were addressing their needs through those departmentalized special classes, if we didn't have that option available and we just said we had to deal with existing staff, we would have to send those students out of district. So it's not a matter so much as bringing students back, because the kids we have out of district have pretty significant needs. I think if you, uh, knew most of them or introduced to most of them, you would agree that they would have difficulty, um, functioning well in our high school, which is why they are in a district.
Um, I have a question. Our special ed teacher certified from six to twelve, or seven to twelve, how are the certifications worth?
Well, it depends on which year you were talking about that they were certified in, in the good old days, they were certified K to twelve. And then they went to elementary, middle school and high school, and then they've gone, they went to one to six, which means you need a different certification, you need a K to two cert- or preschool to two certification for kindergarten. So it, and then there's, there's a middle school generalist certificate, and there's a middle school specialist certificate, and there's a high school generalist and special e- and specialist certificate. And they keep changing it, so depending upon the year that the person got certified, they have all different kinds of certificates.
How do you hire?
Very carefully.
I mean, I guess what I'm.
It is, it's difficult, it makes it very difficult, and it makes it, with the old K to twelve certificates, you could move people around more readily in the district, you no longer can do that. And I can tell you that there are many, 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 many people out there with elementary special education certificates, the field at the secondary level is much tighter.
I guess what I'm having with that is, and, um, I, I think, you know, as we're gonna be looking at everything really carefully, um, when we talk about adding staff, I think we need to step back and see what resources we have and how we're losing them and whether or not there's a more effective way to allocate the current resources we have before we bring in more staff. And I think in this area, I look at seven teachers in the middle school with fewer grades, and, um, it would be interesting to have a more in-depth conversation about that, you know, have some thoughts about that. Um, but I, I think we really need to, you know, we can't leave anything to our terms, given where we are.
We can't, but I.
We need to take a broader step down and say, well, if that's for our kids, given the resources we have, if we're bringing more resources, can we more effectively utilize the, you know, twelve point three teachers that we already have versus creating another position? So I, that's kind of where I'm, where my eyes are going.
Happy to entertain that conversation, although I think we'd quickly come to the conclusion that we would be out of compliance and without, without using having that number of staff. The need for an additional elementary special education teacher, I have two different, uh, situ- scenarios outlined there, we have, um, in the last two years, had the need for two integrated co-teaching classes at the kindergarten level due to the number of students coming up through the CPSE process, which is, uh, the numbers have been increasing. If that trend continues, and the problem is that we're here in January and it's very difficult to predict what four-year-olds are gonna need by next September. Their developmental process varies so much, as well as the fact that CPSE is sort of an open enrollment process, so at any time, we could get referrals and have more kids classified at that level than we currently know about. So it's, at the moment, it looks like we may only need one next year, but I can't guarantee that until we get further into the year.
We've had to deal with this year adding a new section in kindergarten because of the influx of younger families. I know the numbers aren't there for next year, my, just anecdotally, from meeting people that are new to the community, I think we're gonna need to maintain that additional section for next year, that's just my gut on it, we'll see what happens. Have you looked at whether, over the past five years, six years, and clearly we're doing a very good job, I think, overall, with our special education department? Are you noticing at the younger grades, seeing a higher percentage of children coming to the district, getting these placements?
We are definitely having kids move into the district that, um, have IEPs upon their arrival, not that we're necessarily classifying after they get here, if they've already been classified or, or, and certainly the numbers at the s- at the preschool level have been increasing over time. Coming in the past, we've roughly doubled in the last six years, this seems to be a little bit of a lull this year, which is why we're thinking we may not need those two sections, but the overall trend has been upward. And I think the trend is not just in numbers, but in the complexity of the cases and the issues that we're seeing students come through.
Relative to what, um, Bob just said, are these new students being referred in by other school districts or being compensated?
No.
Because people that are moving in.
People are moving into district and families are buying all this.
Right.
And my, my second scenario that we're a little concerned about is, um, right now, our third grade ICT class is sort of at the max that we could expect to put into that classroom, and that included three students that, when we budgeted last year, we didn't know about. And we've had a significant number of kids with disabilities move into the district, uh, where we've been able to absorb them at most grade levels, but at the third grade level, it's pushed the numbers to the extent that we literally, if one more student moved in, we would need two sections next year for fourth grade. So, my anticipation is, why have the two scenarios there, but I'm asking for one teacher, is that it would probably be one or the other. That we'd probably need an elementary special education teacher. If things work out differently and we don't need it at all, obviously, we wouldn't be hiring, but.
And for kindergarten, incoming kindergartens, do you have some idea based on kids in the CPSE?
Correct.
I mean, how likely in, traditionally in the past, has it been that last-minute people come in with the need of, has it been that many?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Um, the last two years when we added the, I think they passed, based on the fact that, um, on students, okay, that those grades are continuing to two in each grade?
Right.
Or have you seen any of them come down?
Yeah, not.
Okay, so they're continuing, it's just, it's just.
So they're arranging up the.
Right, the current K one would move to one, two.
Right, right, okay.
The only difference is that if we don't need two at kindergarten last year, then we would not need two people in our public, obviously, two teachers that move to one.
So the, the special ed teacher moves off and an additional general teacher becomes an out-of-team.
Exactly.
That's what would happen.
Wonder what it did in there? All right, so the equipment line, there's six thousand dollars there, and that's largely, um, a placeholder because students with disabilities, whether they're in district or out of district, sometimes require very specialized equipment. For instance, an alternative communication device could take that whole six thousand dollars off the table for one device. So we put money in there, uh, in the event that somebody needs something along those lines, and we put money there, so. Could be a wheelchair, although most of the time, we don't end up buying wheelchairs as much, right, it's more often it's devices, specialized devices that, that students require. Um, there's, you know, there've been standings, chairs, standards, there are all kinds of special seats that sometimes students need in order to maintain their posture appropriately in the classroom. So many things that could come out of that line. Some of that, we also take out of the, the federal grant monies, but.
What is, oh, I need to use my product, the J C O S?
Yes.
What is J C O S?
John Cardinal O'Connor School.
Okay.
Right, other expenses, um, you can see we're down forty-three thousand six, don't get too excited, because part of the reason for that is a little asterisk that says we moved P T and O T services to the appropriate code, so you'll see that that code went up twenty-five thousand dollars, we moved twenty-five thousand dollars that we had budgeted in the one line into the other one. So the rest of it is because we do have some legal settlements that are in that line, and some of those are ending, students are returning to the district or whatever.
So where did that line, where did we get moved into?
Into the O T P T, um, did you look at four hundred point four?
Okay.
It was just another seven, four.
It went up twenty-five.
It went up twenty-five, so we are ahead, because we went down forty-three, went up twenty-five, so there are some other, um, aspects of that line that went down.
Could you explain just so everybody understands, um, line item four seventy and four ninety?
Question?
Oh, we haven't got, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you was, okay, I'm sorry.
That's right.
I thought we were jumping, I thought we were starting to jump.
Coming soon to the theater area.
So the other types of testing.
Right. Um, you know, the other lines that are there, you can see we do, uh, other testing is where we need to do, uh, sometimes we have to do more specialized testing that is beyond the capacity of our school psychologists. Sometimes they have to do a psychiatric or, uh, something along those lines, that comes out of that line. Homebound instruction went up significantly, because that's actually more realistic budgeting, we've been overspending that line for, in the past, uh, pretty consistently, and previous.
What is homebound?
Administrators would just backfill it, and Deb and I agreed that we should just accurately.
Is this, is this our first placement when kids are on suspensions and things like that?
And/or when students have significant, if a student gets mono or breaks a leg and can't come to school, or does something that requires them to be, due to illness or something, to be on homebound instruction, it's both, that line.
Okay.
Uh, there are actually two different lines, one, if the student has a disability, it's a different line than if they don't have a disability, so there are actually two homebound instruction lines. You can only see one of them. But they all goes through my office.
J C O S contractual?
J C O S contractual is just, um, in addition to, you know, other services, we have people that we're providing contractual service to, but if there's something else that we have to do with them occasionally, you know, could be a, just, again, a testing situation, a nursing situation, whatever, like a nurse specialized.
Do we get reimbursed for this?
Um, all, virtually all of what we're providing to J C O S is reimbursable, except for that background administrative piece that we were just talking about.
So this line item is reimbursable?
Through the line item on the front.
Right.
And we'd get the same dollar amount, you said we kind of, you alluded that we get somewhat, what's?
No, we, we, we take the cost, and we carve it up amongst the home school district for that individual student, so we bill all of that back. Right now, at John Cardinal O'Connor School, there are no Irving residents attending that school, we would not be able to bill back, we have to bill ourselves. But, um, at the moment, there are all students from other districts, and therefore, we can bill back the services, um, and that includes the nurse. And that is another line that has gone up, is that under?
No, that's.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
We have our professional development.
Right, our legal expenses fluctuate from year to year, depending on how much legal action there is and how involved our students are, so we, uh, we do our best to predict that, and sometimes.
Supplies are office supplies as well as, um, instructional supplies that are needed for special ed students.
Again, quite a bit of that, quite a bit of supply money in the federal grants, so the vast majority of it is theirs, but federal grants are all required to supplement the budget, not supplant the budget. So we're required to have money in these lines, even though, you know, we do spend a significant amount of the federal grants.
The computer software is instructional software that's used by the special ed students?
Right, it could also be so- office software, but since most of our office, office software is on the network, and it doesn't hit my office directly, it's usually a specialized program that a, that a particular student needs.
Now, down tuition?
Right. So the tuition is up forty thousand dollars overall, um, I think I've told you in the past that, uh, we generally use an eight percent increase for tuition, we anticipate that there'll be tuition increases across the board about eight percent, at forty percent, uh, forty thousand dollars. At forty percent, $40,000 represents less than eight percent. So, obviously, something else is going on. We've had some kids age out of their out-of-district placements, and so they are going on with their lives, and no longer are we paying their placements. Also, as you know, we have a partnership with Hastings, where they runs some programs, eight to five, and we run programs, six to twelve. Well, we've had a couple of, several kids that are shifting from our district paying Hastings to Hastings now paying our district. So, that number has not risen as much as it would had that shift not occurred. So, and the BOSI's placements, also up $40,000, again, part of that, um, that eight percent would be a much greater number than $40,000. So, we had had some shifts in placements. Some kids that were actually out of the BOSI's line have gone into the other line, where we're looking at a private school. Sometimes, we, and this is not the reason we made the shift, but sometimes it happens that a private school is more appropriate, and actually, sometimes, their tuition is less than a BOSI's tuition, so...
BOSI placement, certainly, is very...
Well, all of the placements can be pretty severely handicapped, so, but kids do move around. Sometimes, we find out for one reason or another. Either a parent approaches us, not that they have total decision-making power, but they may approach us and say, "We'd like to take a look at another type of program," and we either take a look at it and go away, or we discuss it further. But, one way or the other, kids move from placement to placement. Uh, sometimes, they, they get older, or either they're too old for a particular program, we have to shift them into another program. So, there's always movement going on. But also, for instance, we've had kids in out-of-district, out-of-state placements. The state has really cracked down on that, and they've encouraged us if one is possible to move them into New York state placements, so there's movement.
The cost per student in the private tuition, it's about $72,000, is that right? We just take the twenty, the fourteen, one million four hundred? Right, of course, I was just doing math.
You can have students that are well over $100,000 a year. So, overall, so, you're right, okay. Go back and look, I would say it's probably smaller than it has been in the last couple of years.
And of the $300,000 increase in instructional...
Oh, yeah.
How much are the two?
Well, we've had one unbudgeted new teacher this year who knows how expensive these things are budget, okay? So, we have to account for that. There's always going to change, whatever, there's a belief that a teacher's not here, a substitute teacher comes out of there, so that's something, some of the increase. But I usually figure about seventy, seventy-five thousand.
For, for each of those positions?
Right.
So, approximately 150,000.
Right, right, right.
And to Rob's point earlier, we are doing the budget process in advance of the annual review process, where we review every single student's program that has an IEP. And if, in the process of, that process, we determine that... If the teacher didn't need elsewhere or somewhere, we certainly would make that shift, but it's fairly unlikely. I don't want to lead to a belief that that's likely to happen.
Um, I'll just, um, don't call me. But we'll ask Dr. Mosenthal to talk about the guidance positions.
Can I ask you a question? I'm sorry, because I thought this was going to be on the view of nursing.
Oh, we have that there.
We're going to get to that one.
Hold that, hold that. We're doing guidance.
Hold that one.
So, my role here is a quick one to talk about the guidance position, which currently is a full-time position, guidance department chairperson position. It's currently a full-time position with Irvington picking up a half, which designated as the department chairperson piece. BOSI's this year is picking up the other half, um, and for scheduling purposes, really work with their kids. They've had some serious problems in the past where their kids have, they've had trouble scheduling their kids, because they've had massive turnover in their staffing, and people come on board, have no idea kind of how things are done here. So, the goal is to have our department chair guidance help them with their, with their staff, with their scheduling. That has been a mixed success this year, only because BOSI's program is, again, undergoing some changes, and there's their personnel, and really hasn't probably utilized Lester Agleson in a way which would have benefited them the most, which I think they would admit to. So, going forward, there's a question, whether or not BOSI will continue to pay for, for that .5. And I'm here to give you three reasons why I think that .5 should continue, if BOSI were not to step up and pay for that. One would be if the current chair, Lester Agleson, were to be a full-time. Again, most of, much of his time would be spent on the chairperson piece of it, but we would then extend his job to include a caseload, which has been done in the past with prior chairpersons. So, that would, he would pick up 50 to 60 kids, and therefore, reduce the caseload from everybody else, obviously. That allows more individualized attention given to students, obviously. It allows them to do more in-class work, frees them to do more things and to expand their role. On his end, I think it's a real benefit, because it connects him with kids and it connects him with parents in a way that, this year, he has not had that opportunity to do so. It's purely administrative on our end, BOSI's the other end, and really has had not much interaction with the Irvington population. So, it's a loss both ways. I think he has not benefited from not connecting to the parents and students, and I think our parents and students have not enough from connecting to him and what he brings to his job. And thirdly, I think, it's hard to imagine what it would look like with eight point five. There was a talk earlier about the clerical position and how difficult it might be to find a part-time. Multiply that about 10 when you get to an administrator, trying to find somebody part-time and step in and take that on. That pool would be, I mean, not a shallow, you call it pool. Because somebody is not going to come here, obviously, for a point five, if that person's operating as a department chair in another district. And certainly, nobody's going to come here even as a working guidance counselor for a point five. So, I think we need to think about what that means on a practical level. We better keep in mind that if you went to a point five model, that are...
I would agree with all of that.
And if I just may interject at that point, understand that we're not letting BOSI's get away easily on this. That I had a meeting last week with the BOSI superintendent on the topic. Not only focusing on what the needs and the benefits of the guidance position are, but also helping them to explore how they could better operate their own program in our school, and by making better use of our staff, we better serve their own students, reduce some of their costs, but also serve our students that are Irvington children, that attend Irvington High School, that take BOSI's programs. So, they're intrigued by the conversation, and Mr. Palamo and I are meeting with a number of staff members from BOSI's, I think, a week and a half down the road, to explore this further.
What do you think, felt like you guys know, what they plan on doing?
Uh, we're, we certainly will try to move as quickly as we can to get a commitment from them, because we need to work this into our budget recommendations, which will be, you know, taking place just a little over a month down the road.
Okay, so, scenario, what if BOSI picks up the other half? Scott made this presentation as to why we still need the other half, you know, some very valid points. How are we going to fix them and accommodate all that?
In the budget?
Just going forward.
If, if BOSI picks up the other half, and we're not adding any services to our guidance program, we're essentially doing the same thing we did, so...
But Scott still made, you know, made some very valid points as to why we would still need a half-time person.
Why they need a full-time?
Oh, right, why we need a full-time person.
If, I, I, I think that there, there has to be recognized, there needs to be an effort that's to better integrate our chairperson into the programs of the school. And by doing so, there's a number of things that are on the table that would include maybe not the size of the student load that Dr. Mosenthal referenced, but to introduce a caseload, which I think would be important. But we've also explored other programs that, that we think are critical to the school, that Dr. Mosenthal has historically led and run. We're trying to work some opportunities for Ms. Ferguson to assume some of those responsibilities at this point. Uh, but there, there would have to be a middle road. If BOSI's is still a part of the equation, we recognize there's a need to integrate this individual into the daily operations of our schools in a much more dramatic way than it's ever been.
So, I'm confused, what's in these numbers? What assumptions did you make when you made the numbers of these presentations? Did you make that? Did you assume we were paying a full-time person, or...
This is for, what would happen, this is for six point old positions, this budget.
If... We're something else on the line.
One fifty.
It's for the, includes the half-time position that was in BOSI's fund. If BOSI agrees to pay for half of the position, that would show up on the revenue side of the budget.
Okay.
You can't just net things out, it has to be shown on the revenue side.
Okay, so you're saying, so this 22 increase, the 656, 674, includes an additional point five FTE for guidance? Okay, thank you.
I also wouldn't want to leave you the impression that if BOSI hires Lester half of the time, that it wouldn't benefit Irvington students as well, because the scheduling piece is huge in that we have students that attend BOSI's classes and BOSI's students that attend Irvington classes. So, the coordination of those efforts in the scheduling benefits all of the students, because services are coordinated and students are in classes that they should be in, and it all works. As Scott alluded to, there were significant difficulties in the last two years in that, in that effort, and I think cleaning that up would serve all of our students at the high school to a degree.
Okay, just a quick overview of the other expense line item in guidance. It's only going up $220, but I thought you might be interested in what it included. The majority of that money is to cover the NAVIUP software, and that's used for electronic submission of student applications and documents. And NAVIUP supports over 1,800 colleges and universities throughout the United States. The software package also provides tracking of student additions to colleges and universities, so that students can look online to see how many Irvington students, for example, applied to Yale and how many were accepted. So, it gives them the odds of favor for different schools. It provides also tenth-grade career profiling and ninth-grade learning interest inventory. They're all software programs that are used by the guidance department.
And this is all for $220?
It's all about $3,000.
I thought you meant the difference was only for this, okay.
Um, and then other professional development is the NACAC membership fee, national, and conference attendance fee by any guidance counselor. And supplies are just office supplies and also specialized guidance books that are needed. So, the total increase in the guidance budget is $10,452.
Could you speak to why the non-instructional salaries is going down by 13,000?
That is due to a retirement that department that was not included in last year's budget, because we would go fight after and back. And the new hire naturally was at a much lower rate, and I don't think she was here in July, so... So, it's not for a full year. So, the increase of about $5,000, that was not attributable to admissions for a full year's salary.
Right, full year's salary.
So, now, we'll go back to Dr. C for help.
Okay. So, now, we'll get to nurses. You'll see that there is an increase in the nurses' salaries, and that is a function of a student that John Cardinal O'Connor accepted that had some significant medical issues, and so required, we moved from two hours a day of nursing services we were providing to a five-hour day, a full day of nursing services. Um, and so, unfunded in this budget, but again, that, that's billable back to the home district. So, there is a revenue side, you know, that balances that, but that's, that's the reason for that line.
So, does someone else have a question about nursing in general?
Yeah. So, under an IEP, it's unfunded in this year's budget?
In other words, we were notified after the budget process last year that this student had been accepted at J-COS, and they made the request for additional nursing services as a result. And so, we have, we have provided those services, which resulted in funds that we hadn't budgeted before having to be expended. But again, there is that revenue side, because those services are billable back to that one district.
Now, logistically, is this our nurses providing services, or is it outside?
This is a, no, this is a separate nurse that we employ to work at J-COS.
How come it always seems like nurses from the different schools down Lane and Main Street are being pulled and running up to another school? It's not the John Connor?
They're more often running to our own schools when a nurse is absent because of that sub-problem that I alluded to earlier. We have difficulty getting nurses up, so they're covering each other. On rare occasions, they might have to run that, but since J-COS made this request for five hours, it used to be the nurse was only down there two hours. So, if something happened at another hour, one of our nurses had to run down there. Now that we've expanded the services down there, we no longer have to do that. Personnel services, again, the, the overall picture, we've covered most of these areas, the nurses that...
The health services, uh, districts are where we have to pay for our students that are going to other school districts?
Foster students or...
Right.
Um, and then, the other increases in salary lines are, again, contractual salary increases. That covers most of it.
Much of the $33,000 is the five hours, and how much is just contractual? I mean, roughly?
Um...
For the nurses?
Roughly, what do you estimate?
Right.
Look at that supplies line, and you see it went up $3.
Well, it went, it went up about, from 263 to 284 this year, it went up $21,000 to cover the nurse. Plus, there was some overtime in there. So, that's why I'm saying it's about, yeah, probably about 16, 18,000 is attributable to the J-COS.
Supply line went up $3, I'm really not sure. I thought I had cleaned that up and zeroed that out, but apparently, I didn't. I didn't, but, oh, can't explain why there's a $3 increase on that, but save those $3.
So, any other questions on this section?
Yeah, one quick question. So, under nurses' salaries, it says you have 5.5 full-time positions. How is that? With, are you considering John O'Connor a full-time physician? So, what do you think?
No, that's the half.
That's the half, so where do you think that, if we have four buildings with four nurses, who's the other one? That's supposed to be 4.5.
Could be very close.
Okay.
They have four nurses. We still have four nurses, the same four will always happen.
You're saying we had a floater between the four schools now, or something? Okay.
Sure the nurses would appreciate that, but we don't have one.
They would, really.
Okay, so, in summary, I have been giving you this update sheet at the end of every presentation to show where we are on the budget now. So, with all of the presentations to date, our budget right now is $2,749.712, which is a 1.64% increase overall in those respective lines. Um, duly note, we haven't reached the main part of budget, which will be in two weeks, when we present the final statements of construction, library, structural technology, occupational ed, regular, and the employee benefits. And that will give us the whole, overall figure.
I mean, that's a difficult size to look at, until you have the whole life scenario, it really does.
If this is a percentage increase from those sections...
Right, I mean, I understand it, it's a snapshot, but it means nothing until you look at it in the context of the public.
Well, is there any other questions that I want to give the public sometime? I know, I, I, I cut you off earlier, so please, if you want to go first and ask a question. Thanks.
Hi, Stephanie Plow. So, sort of a question comment going back to athletics, because I recognize this budget year is going to be no different than the ones in the past. It's going to be very difficult to make everything work out. And as a disclaimer, my three kids are all athletes. are all athletes. So in no way, shape, or form should this ever be considered in any way anti-athletic, however. I'm wondering, was there a trigger point in terms of enrollment that got us to the vast number of athletic programs that we currently have? Is there going to be a trigger point on the way down that enrollment's beginning to decrease that gets us to a maybe a more reasonable, sustainable athletic program that doesn't have however many number of teams we currently have? And I guess it also sort of piggybacks on Jim's comment, you know, you said about fundraising. But what do we mean by that for the teams? I know the varsity girls soccer team fundraises to pay for an assistant coach. They don't have one. So that's how they pay for that person. Is that the kind of thing that we look at for next year? I know that football has assistant coaches. Should that come out of the budget? Should they fundraise for that? And then also on top of that, we look for some of the other sports that were here. I'm looking at like these for bowling, the ice rink. Do we ever look at those on a per pupil basis? You know, are some of those sports, expensive sports that going forward, really can't manage on a per pupil basis? So those are my questions.
Thank you. I want to take the.
We did check it through that, but they go down. So is this part of the instructional process? Cannot currently be because also are to be provided a free public education. So is part of the phys ed program, if those specific sports are part of the phys ed requirements that you can't charge them for those?
You said, Bobby, the girls team is paying for their assistant coach at this point?
No, you said like fees, like, you know.
Oh, well, it's the same thing about fundraising. So, you know, that the kind of thing comes out of the budget and then the teams have to fundraise for those assistant coaching commissions?
So I guess there's a couple of things to look at. One, and I think we've identified an area that we're going to look into with Mr. McCormick and Dr. Rosenthal is looking at the fundraising mechanisms that are already in place and see how we can make better use of them to offset expenditures. Ms. Miller referenced other funding sources and whether it's charging students to participate, participation fees. She references that, you know, athletics can be, competitive athletics, she knows in an extension of physical education programs within the state of New York. We actually, we had one general analysis completed by council. They're going to greater detail to see if there's other opportunities there for us. But I think your point is well taken. With respect to identifying that, a trigger point associated with enrollment and looking whether, what programs have been added through the years, Mr. McCormick referenced, you know, interest or participation data that's leading to recommendations that are requests that he has going into next year. But certainly we have to look at if there's a declining enrollment or I would prefer to say declining participation, that we would then, we'd have to look at that as well and see where that comfort level is. Overall, we look at the district this year, we can see increased enrollment. While there's been a little bit of a downturn at the high school, we're seeing growing numbers at the other end. So the high school numbers are a little smaller. But I think the one thing we're going to walk away from today, looking at when we're going back and revisiting this and looking for our recommendations when we come forward in a month or so, that we're going to be looking at what programs we can continue to support and if there's really reason or need for growing some programs to make sure we have the data to support. So your points are well taken.
And we're also doing that frankly, I know at the end of the last budget season, we had many discussions of the board about the classes, again, not to pick up the high school, because it's just a different thing, but there were classes at the high school. You know, are we a district with the financial burden that we have and what's being imposed upon us? Can we, should we, not can we, because we're doing it, but should we field a class with four kids in it? You know, is that the type of district that we can continue to sustain? And I'm sure, you know, the same analysis goes even more so for our sports teams. It doesn't. Do you have a cross country program for two kids? Just picking on cross country. I have no idea.
So that's like, yeah, that's like.
Yeah, right. No, okay. Cross country parents are going to be.
I mean, I guess what you're saying to the high school, also the sports. I mean, we've done it in sports. There aren't the other ways that we could continue to support synergies with other towns. I mean, if there's a way to do where any duo is joint team, there's a bunch of teams combined. So if the numbers dwindle, we can save money by combining, hoping that we're always accountable for that too.
But we did it last year with field hockey and lacrosse.
There's simple, some of these sports are simple. Right now, volleyball numbers were low, just based on the number of boys in that grade. So of the years, we had over thirty and this year was down. So of the years, our volleyball numbers were down and this year they were up. Field hockey numbers have been up.
My sense is that we field the teams that have the interest and we don't field the teams that don't. And the harder question is, should we field all of these teams even if there is interest? That's the tough call. That's the real question. That's right.
I would, relative to that, maybe Ann and I, I've asked for this a few times and I never seem to get the answer. I would love to know how many students there are in our sports program. Not, not on a, if one student plays three sports, they're considered three students. But how many real students in our.
Participate in at least one sport.
Participate in one sport. I'm a big proponent of athletics in a holistic approach. It helps the kids focus on their academics. I strongly believe in that. But relative to what you're alluding to, if the numbers are skewed, that we have a very, much smaller number of participants than we really think, we've got to rethink our academic program. But if it turns out that of the four hundred kids at a high school, we've got three hundred kids participating in sports, then probably every family in Irvington's going to be happy that we maintain it. If it's a hundred students are the entire sports program, then we've got to stop and say, wait a second. What resources are we using to benefit so many students? So I would love that number. It would answer a lot of my concerns.
So what you're saying would really be much more appropriate than my team. Because, you know, if you're, and again, we did this a few years ago. I mean, if you want to say, you know, if there's, you know, ten kids on a particular sports team, then if we're going to decide, and I think you also have to look at how much money are we going to save and what's the opportunity cost of taking that away to those kids. But, you know, if you look at the whole numbers, that doesn't really tell us much. But if you're trying to identify the sports where maybe there's a lot of interest, then it becomes much more relevant.
If, yes.
And then you take to the next level, which is how much money are we actually going to save by doing this? And is it worth it if we save a thousand dollars if ten kids don't get to participate in varsity sport on their college?
I could, I could give Mr. McCormick five hours homework on what stats I would see.
One. I think that's an easy one.
I mean, I think maybe we'll start there, but I think we really don't look at the sports program and we really do need to take a step back, which we did a few years ago. And just look at it by sport, by team and how many participants. Then if you start figuring out and then they also.
You got to put dollar value on it.
Well, that's also one of the reasons why I think a couple of years back, we ended up producing the amount of money the district paid for ice hockey time because there were so few kids participating that the cost of the district on a first student basis was just not consistent across the board. So, I mean, if you need to figure out, you know, we could do a lot of analysis. It doesn't make sense. And if that's the direction we're going, you know, what's.
Let's get Jim's question answered. Anyone else in the community want to ask a question about the budget presentation? All right. Chris, you wanted to wrap it up?
Yeah, a few closing remarks. As Beverly indicated, we're coming to the real meat of the budget, the expense of the budget. And that is what we're seeing in the school-based budgets and the instructional budget. So when we fast forward our clock two weeks looking to the next Board of Education meeting, Dr. Core and our principals will take main stage, center stage, and walk us through what our curricular needs are. And that will, most of that is obviously absorbed with the respective staffing costs. At the conclusion of that, we'll be completing Beverly's slide that we're getting used to seeing now. And from there, we're going to be in a position where the administration, the board, and the community start to get down to that nitty gritty work, start to look at the data, start to make recommendations. And it's going to be things from Mr. McCann's request to Mr. McCormick and looking at athletics that really I think what we're looking at here is a cost benefit analysis, seeing what that investment is, communicating for, you know, our students' experiences, but also digging into what we're investing in student programs, the programs that we value. And this is the time, things are going to get emotional. This is the time that things are going to get challenging. So as administration, we're starting to move into, you know, finalizing, preparing our budget for next week. We're also thinking about those next steps. We're thinking about where we have to start to go to find savings. We recognize that we're in a position going back to December twentieth. I think that presentation we gave where we identified the number of one point seven million dollars. When you go and you look at these presentations and start to piece them together, we're going to be above the one point seven million dollars because in that past month, things have come in that weren't available for us to look at. Some costs have come in, whether it's student needs that have increased. So that's a number that's going to be north of that one point seven. I know the board back on December twentieth had some conversation about the direction of when we're going to go, looking at and contemplating that major impact that we would foresee to our programs if we were to go and cut that hypothetical one point seven million dollars. So from an administrative standpoint, I guess I'm going to ask the board to start considering the direction and the charge that you want to give us. I think it would, to make our efforts and our time as fruitful as possible, if the board can begin to contemplate a direction, a target that you want us to work for, whether that's a dollar amount or a percentage, we certainly can come in with our recommendations. But I can tell you, where we haven't gotten to the meat of the budget yet, there isn't much that has been presented that I can stand here and put forth a great argument that we need for the benefit of our children. But I recognize we can't have it all. So in doing so, I want to challenge you a little bit, just as we're going to be challenged in the coming months to come up with our proposals. I want, I'm going to ask that you start to think about that direction that you want to give us. And not that we're looking for, or I'm looking for an answer today, but some targeted direction at the close of next board meeting, I think would be appreciated in that when we, the team, leadership team, start to sit down and recognize the hours and the thought and the research that we're going to put into this, that we're headed in the same direction as the board and beginning to represent what the community wants from its schools. Appreciate your partnership on that journey. I think we need to be there together.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ben. Thanks, everybody.
I want to ask, actually, can, in my head staff talking about, with Adam, the fact that there's a new guy who's been doing the room and now had an opportunity as a community or as a board to hear much about it so far. I know we wanted to make sure that people have time to get them, get some money or whatever. I'm wondering if there would be an opportunity before that line, I don't have to be excited in the budget, to get some sort of a sense of presentation or overview for the community about like, what is going, you're asking us going, you're asking a hire, you know, kind of a little more detail about Scott's point about how is the hack point working? I mean, is this going to be useful information as we go into the visiting process?
Yeah, I, I, Robyn, I think, I hear you and you will certainly bring more information to the forefront with respect to guidance. And I would be hopeful that we'll have some fruitful dialogue with BOSI's along the way that it helps us to better paint a picture of the direction that we'd like the program to go. Be in a position where we're going to have that partnership. We'll highlight what that will look like with an enriched participation in Irvington High School. And if that partnership with BOSI's isn't going to exist, we're going to bring to life that picture that Scott was painting of the benefits of the position for our kids.
Hold on, hold on. Is it possible, I don't know the seat was sitting here, right? I think Robyn was possibly, correct me if I'm wrong, was talking about possibly hearing some type of overview from the person who's in charge of that.
I mean, I think that's the direction we're going.
Okay. So we're going to see him here with a clicker giving us something before we decide on his budget?
I think it will be integrated into the process.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
So in terms of the overall budget picture, since we're having one point seven million dollars over the cap, that's approximately a two point five million dollar increase overall?
Over two percent?
No. Because at this point, since we're, since we're well over the tax gap, just think about what's the total increase of the budget?
So what, oh.
Right. So I'm just doing some basic math. So is the total budgetary increase, because the, the.
So in other words, we're to take everything that we've seen so far where we're going to be.
Not everything we see, but that going, using the push ahead budget that you did.
Yeah, I don't remember all our, when I did that, one point seven, it's over to tax cap.
And then, again, I think the tax cap calculation should be around eight hundred nine hundred thousand dollars. In your ballpark, it's less than.
We're up two and a half.
Oh, we're two point five, two point six. No, that's the total number. That's the number that I think.
Inclusive of the.
Up before the additional things that have been added in here.
So we're up two and a half over before we have the meat of the.
So that's all. When the final budget's presented, it'll be about two point five over.
You're forgetting that when, a couple of weeks ago, he did a look at the whole budget and he was saying that he thought it would be one point seven million over the tax gap, which is, since we're well over the tax gap, I'm just trying to figure out what's the total.
Well, I haven't, we haven't done it all yet, but the new positions that have been in, we're not part of that.
Right, so we're even over that number. But I'm just trying to get to a number that looks like that at this point, not including all these additions that you've added in, we're probably close to five, we're five percent or more over three.
We're still working on the instructional part.
Chris has said what target, you know, he's asking us for a target. So if we, if we're at a five to five and a half percent increase, we shouldn't set a target that's two point five percent increase, which would require him to cut millions.
Yeah, so, but to your point too, Matt, I just pulled up the presentation from December. And the presentation from December, we're looking at the two percent within cap is eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And then we're going and looking at our maintenance budget at that point, again, was nine hundred and, let's say roughly eighty thousand dollars over the tax cap. And then we discussed the need to address the tax surges, which brought it to the one point six seven nine million. So with that said, if we're looking at roughly one point seven and eight hundred and sixty, your guesstimate is absolutely valid.
Right.
And there's some additions.
We're up three billion.
Robert.
Increase, increase to the budget. Increase the budget.
Okay.
So we are looking at a total tax increase, budget increase, pardon me, not tax increase, of five percent plus at this point, based on the numbers that, is the math I did this four point eight.
Yeah, I was going to say four point nine.
Ballpark.
So that tells us what we should be thinking about in terms of cutting back. We're thinking that we should have a lower target.
Right.
Right, so what, I mean, based on last year's number, five percent budget increase would change that into what percentage of the tax increase?
I'm sorry. I apologize. I don't have a figure of what my hit is.
Yeah, I just, I can't remember if the budget went up by one percent, what budget it went up by.
The taxes. Because if the values are going down, the tax surges.
Might be.
Thank you. Sorry to.
No, 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 no. Your guesstimate was right on. Sorry.
Okay. Anything else?
So your, your direction in that area would be appreciated.
I have all the numbers.
We'll give them to you.
I can't read my question.
We're not asking for decisions.
Okay, our next meeting will be February fifth. Same bat channel, same bat cave.
Four point something again?
Can I get a motion to adjourn our work session?
Yes.
Five seconds. All in favor?
Aye, five zero. Thanks, everybody.